All right, and I call the City Council Caucus meeting to order. We have one public hearing tonight, and then if the clerk would read the first item for final consideration.
Item number one for final consideration: An ordinance amending Chapter 186 of the Code of the City of Schenectady to include reference to four-hour blocks of time for which the pavilion may be rented and adding a $50 fee.
This was discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number two.
Item number two: An ordinance amending Section 264 of the Code of the City of Schenectady regarding medical hospitality houses.
Also discussed in committee without objection on consent. Number three.
Number three for original consideration: An ordinance amending the adopted 2013 capital budget.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent.
Item number four: An ordinance approving the continuation of the current bond anticipation notes for an additional year.
Again, discussed in committee. Mr. Riggi? All right. It's a roll call on that.
Item number five: An ordinance, bond ordinance dated March 11, 2013, authorizing the issuance of $6,985,000 aggregate principal amount serial bonds of the City of Schenectady, New York pursuant to the local finance law to finance the acquisition and installation of water meters, construction and reconstruction of the water distribution system, acquisition of machinery and apparatus for construction and maintenance of roofs by the Water Department, reconstruction of the sewer system, and acquisition of the and installation of replacement equipment for the wastewater treatment plant and pump stations.
This was also discussed in committee. Mr. Riggi, roll call.
Item number six: A resolution authorizing Bombers Burrito Bar to serve alcoholic beverages at a public event on May 3, 2013.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent.
Item number seven: A resolution approving appointments by the City of Schenectady Energy Advisory Board.
Again, discussed in committee without objection on consent.
Item number eight: A resolution authorizing the City of Schenectady to settle a claim made by Adriana Ferrara.
Discussed in Claims Committee without objection on consent.
Item number nine: A resolution authorizing the City of Schenectady to settle a claim by Sharice Laduke.
Also discussed in Claims without objection on consent.
Item number 10: A resolution recognizing the month of March as Irish Heritage Month and recognizing the achievements of Irish Americans on St. Patrick's Day.
We'll take this one out of order. Ms. Brucker, you will present that.
Item number 11: A resolution recognizing the month of March as Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, and Transgender Health Month.
All right, Ms. Prazzo. Okay, we'll take this one out of order as well.
Under Contract and Supply, item number 12: A resolution accepting a bid from United Uniform and Municipal Emergency Services, Inc. for firefighter uniforms for the fire department.
Discussed in Public Safety without objection on consent.
Item number 13: A resolution accepting a bid from Garrison Fire and Rescue Corporation for gem tow harnesses for the fire department.
Also discussed in Public Safety without objection on consent.
Item number 14: A resolution authorizing the City of Schenectady to enter into a contract with Mohawk Hudson Humane Society to provide animal control shelter services for the confinement of dogs seized within the City of Schenectady.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent. And then we have one possible additional resolution.
Under unanimous consent, number 14A: A resolution, NLC project on promoting black male achievement.
Okay. Ms. Porterfield, do you want to give a little bit of information about that?
I want to clarify what this is about since it did not come through committee. The National League of Cities is offering an opportunity for cities to reply to a proposal on receiving technical assistance on promoting black male achievement. There is, first of all, let me just be clarified that there is no money that the city has to pay in order to apply for this technical assistance. It would be a 16-month technical assistance, and the initiative would focus on improving education work and family outcomes for black men and boys. It's sponsored by the National League of Cities Institute for Youth Education and Families, and it's supported by the Open Society Foundation Campaign for Black Male Achievement. So what the city would be doing is actually, in conjunction with Schenectady County Community College, this opportunity was brought to us by Dr. Quentin Bullock, and so the college would be writing it, and the city is being asked to have the governmental bodies support the application, the proposal. It would be, there would be six cities that would actually get the actual, it's not a grant, the technical assistance. And so it's based on the data regarding black males in terms of education, the homicide rate, and other statistics like that. So what the city is being asked to do is just to support it from the city council to say that we are willing to support the proposal, and again, there's no money involved. There would be just a commitment to support the proposal. If we're awarded it, to work together with the existing agencies that are already in our city, we would not have to start anything new in order to do this. So I just wanted to clarify what that's about.
Okay, thank you. Anyone have any questions about this? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve it. Okay, Ms. Prazzo, second, Ms. Porterfield, all in favor? Aye. And then a motion to put it on the agenda. Okay. Ms. Prazzo, Ms. Porterfield, all in favor? Aye. Thank you. All right, if there's nothing else to come before the City Council Caucus, I'll declare this closed and call to order the City Council meeting for March 11, 2013, and ask you to rise for the invocation by the Reverend Dr. Bill Levering from the First Reformed Church.
Let us pray. Almighty, never loving God, we ask your blessings on our deliberations. We pray for civil discourse as a part of civic responsibility. We pray for the nations that have made our nation great. We pray for Ireland. We pray for peace in the world. Be with us in our deliberations. Give us wisdom and courage. Amen.
I'm going to call on Mr. Chad Puppin to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Pledge of Allegiance) To the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, if the clerk would call the roll.
Ms. Prazzo.
President.
Ms. Porterfield.
Here.
Mr. Erickson.
Here.
Mr. Riggi.
Here.
Ms. Blanchard is excused. Ms. Brucker.
Here.
Ms. King.
Present.
All right, we have two out-of-order resolutions. The first one we will do is for Irish Heritage Month. Mrs. Brucker.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to invite up all the members of the Hibernians that are here tonight to come on up and help receive this resolution. So please come right up around the rail. We're pleased that you can be here tonight, and it's certainly our pleasure as a city council and as well as the mayor to offer up this resolution as we do for you every year. And a very special day is coming up next Sunday. Hope everyone comes and attends. And, Madam Chair, I'd like to read the resolution.
Please, you have the floor.
Whereas millions of Irish people faced with severe hardship due to famine and poverty in their homeland immigrated to the United States over the last several centuries in search of a more promising future for themselves and their families. And whereas Irish Americans initially suffered prejudice and discrimination upon first arriving in the United States. And whereas an estimated 36 million Americans, over 11 and 1/2 percent of the population, can trace a portion of their ancestry to Ireland and Irish people. And whereas the John F. Kennedy Division One Ancient Order of Hibernians has contributed to Schenectady community for well over 131 years by making donations to worthy causes including city school districts, our city hospitals, and other deserving organizations. And whereas the month of March is universally celebrated as Irish Heritage Month in recognition of the achievements of Irish Americans people. And whereas the city council and the mayor wish to join with those of Irish descent everywhere in a sincere wish for peace in all of Ireland and the full implementation of the Good Friday Peace Accord. And whereas March 17 is universally recognized and annually celebrated as St. Patrick's Day in honor of the patron saint of the Irish people. Now therefore be it resolved that in honor of the achievement and contributions of the Irish American people, the month of March be recognized as Irish Heritage Month in the City of Schenectady. And further be it resolved that Sunday, March 17, 2013, St. Patrick's Day be celebrated throughout the City of Schenectady in furtherance of peace in all of Ireland and in recognition of all of the contributions of our Irish citizens to the success and prosperity of our community, state, and nation. Madam President, I would move the resolution.
Is there a second? Okay. Ms. Erickson? Sorry. All in favor? Aye.
Congratulations, resolution is carried. And certainly I'd like you to introduce the folks that are with you, and then you can introduce our dancers after you're done. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to, on behalf of myself, Steve Banker, who's the current president of JFK Division One, introduce first our ladies division president, Cappy Turk, our New York State Lady Hibernian Treasurer, Jacqueline Clute, my standing committee chair, Jim Scott and his wife Peggy, my recording secretary, Don Allen, media past president Owen Cole, Robert Flaherty, who probably needs no introduction here, Jim Gavin, who is serving as our treasurer, and my financial secretary Mick Blewett. We're all thrilled with this, and we thank you all so much for this honor and for this resolution. And at this time, we would like your permission to show you a bit of Irish culture through our Irish step dancers.
No, we would love that.
We would like by making.
And that's going to be with the Feral. And this will be the Feral School of Irish Dance. Happy St. Patrick's Day, everyone. First of all, we'd like to thank the Schenectady Hibernians, Men's and Ladies Divisions, for having us at their hall every week for dance classes for these young ladies and a few young men. We'll do a few introductions here. When I say your name, ladies, step forward, take a bow. We have Annie. Andrea. Molly. Sydney. Laura. Gillian. Hannah. And Shannon. And three ladies. One, two, three. Thank you. All right, we have a second out-of-order resolution that Ms. Prazzo will present regarding the LGBT Health Month. I'd also invite Mr. Hawk Stone to come forward and join Ms. Prazzo inside the rail.
Thank you for joining us tonight. I have a resolution tonight recognizing the month of March as Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, and Transgender Health Month. Madam Chair?
You have the floor.
Okay. Whereas it serves a great public interest to recognize and applaud those cultural events within the state of New York which serve to celebrate diversity and in doing so, help us to enfranchise all populations within the larger community. And whereas, in full accord with its longstanding traditions, the city council is justly proud to commemorate March 2013 as the Fourth Annual New York Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, and Transgender Health Month with the theme "We Count, Count Us." And whereas LGBT New Yorkers have disproportionately inadequate health care due to financial, cultural, and personal barriers, and New York Health Month encourages local group agencies and organizations to offer a full month of programs and events designated to educate, advocate, and build community around the theme of LGBT health. And whereas, New York LGBT Health Month will raise a better understanding of LGBT health issues and the special health and social service needs that LGBT people have, including increased rates of smoking, breast cancer, substance abuse, HIV, and sexually transmitted diseases, and depression and suicide attempts along with LGBTQ youth. And whereas, New York LGBT Health Month will encourage LGBT New Yorkers and the organizations that serve them to educate, advocate, organize around LGBT health and wellness in all its various forms, physical, sexual, spiritual, emotional, and social. And whereas, our society is greatly benefited by the purposeful efforts of individuals who unite for the cause of improving the quality of life for others and who have proactively worked toward the goal of dignity for all. Now therefore be it resolved that the Schenectady City Council hereby pauses in its deliberations to commemorate March 2013 as the Fourth Annual New York Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, and Transgender Health Month. And as I've stated before, my stepson is transgender. My stepson has absolutely experienced discrimination in both his workplace and through medical visits. So therefore, Madam Chair, I move this resolution.
All right, is there a second? Ms. Brucker, all in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, thank you.
Can I shift this here? I've entered a two of remarks, but when you're disabled, it gets to be a bit of a trick. I want to thank everyone in the council who made this happen. I'm deeply honored to accept this resolution on behalf of the LGBT residents of the City of Schenectady. As this beautiful resolution states, it is important for Schenectady City to embrace diversity and enfranchise marginalized populations, in this case, those inhabitants of New York State who are lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender. In your support of the Fourth Annual LGBT Health Month's theme, "We Count, Count Us," we are reminded of the incredible health disparities which exist not only for LGBT New Yorkers but LGBT Schenectadians. These barriers are not only financial and cultural but also the institutionalized discrimination against LGBT people which is endemic in our culture. We are routinely caught in the "we can't fund you because we don't have any data on you, but we won't fund you to get data on you," catch 22. The first statewide LGBT needs assessment done in 2009 through the Empire State Pride Agenda has not had the tremendous impact on correcting such disparities as was hoped for. There's much work to be done before LGBT New Yorkers can be counted among healthy New Yorkers. As the United Nations Human Rights Document proclaims, health is not just the absence of disease but the presence of wellness. This resolution beautifully and powerfully supports that ideal by focusing not only on where LGBT people have increased morbidity and mortality over non-LGBT people, but expresses the hope of wellness and health in its most inclusive form in physical, sexual, spiritual, emotional, and social well-being. Finally, I would note, I am a resident of this great city of Schenectady, an internationally recognized pioneer in the transgender civil and human rights movement, and myself, an out and proud transgender man. I would call attention to the fact that transgender health disparities are ever more exponentially severe than those disparities our LGBT brothers and sisters face. It is so very important that transgender health and health care are taught in our institutions of higher learning, in our health classes in high school, in our medical schools, and in all areas of human service provision and psychology. There is an immediate need at the state level to pass gender to further send a message that such marginalization is unacceptable in New York State. We transgender people count. We make a difference in the City of Schenectady every day of the year, making valuable contributions. Count us because you can count on us. We take our civic duties very seriously, but we must be healthy, we must be fully protected from discrimination, and included and welcomed in this very diverse city and state to fully participate. Your resolution supports this high value, and for this, I, on behalf of LGBT people of New York, am grateful. Thank you again for your concern, your consideration, and your incredible support of LGBT Health Month. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. All right, we have one public hearing tonight. If the clerk would read that.
Public hearing calling for public comment concerning a proposed local law amending Chapter 210 of the Administrative Code of the City of Schenectady Regarding Rental Certificates.
All right, I have eight people signed up to speak to this. Bahrain Arjun?
Could you tell us who's on the next one?
Joseph Kelleher?
He might be.
Then, oh, I, okay, I see what you've done. You signed up twice, so I'll put you down in the second area. Okay, Joseph Kelleher?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Madam President, City Council members. My name is Joseph Kelleher. I'm a resident of the City of Schenectady. And I had an opportunity to look over the resolution and the consideration of this paper, which I seem to have dropped back in my chair. Excuse me. My wife is very supportive. Thank you, honey. I took a look at this, and in Section C1 noticed this one piece of legislation here which states that the building inspector has the opportunity to include whatever information he deems necessary. As important as that is, and that they may find things as they go along, it seems to be more important to have something in a more standardized form so that when homeowners and house owners, property owners, go to have this property prepared for inspection and such, that they have information up front rather than have this information as deemed necessary. If the SLYC has a lot of great information, and I know that you'll be hearing from them with the Schenectady landlords influencing change, as well as many other property owners in the area who are going to be giving some great input on this, I'm sure, but this seems like it could really use a little bit more input as far as a standardization of a form rather than just seeing what the building inspector seems necessary to put inside it. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Chris Morris?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Chris Morris, and I'm a member of SLYC. Schenectady landlords influencing change is here tonight to respond to the city's latest rental certificate proposal. We would like to preface our specific comments on this proposal, however, with an organization update, if you will. Since its beginning in October 2011, SLYC continues to work for positive change in the rental system in Schenectady. We network with city officials and authorities, program directors, and group organizers. We're reaching out to all factions in Schenectady who share the mission of enhancing the life of our community. And some of our projects are as follows. We seek to educate landlords in the many aspects of owning and operating rental property. And in this vein, we are finalizing the details of a SLYC Home Depot workshop program which will coincide very nicely with the city's latest small repairs proposal. We are designing a universal lease which will have the capability of being appropriately adapted to the individual properties. We are establishing a SLYC website to provide valuable information and updates for members and other interested parties. We're networking with the Schenectady Eviction Task Force on a monthly basis in an effort to gain further insight into the workings of the participating agencies and their programs. And as a group, we will be tending landlord training sponsored by the Eviction Task Force in May, where SLYC will be included in introductions. We have also implemented a tenant recognition program to acknowledge tenants who exemplify upstanding citizens of good conscience. We feel attention to positive aspects of the tenant landlord connection will nurture more of the same. The growth and work of SLYC is fueled by a relentless commitment to finding ways to affect significant change in both attitudes and procedures relevant to Schenectady's rental system, such as the rental certificate issue currently under consideration. We hope to forge productive relationships with all those who can share
And in this vein, we are finalizing the details of a SLIC Home Depot Workshop Program, which will coincide very nicely with the city's latest small repairs proposal. We are designing a universal lease, which will have the capability of being appropriately adapted to the individual properties. We are establishing a SLIC website to provide valuable information and updates for members and other interested parties. We're networking with the Schenectady Eviction Task Force on a monthly basis in an effort to gain further insight into the workings of the participating agencies and their programs. And as a group, we will be tending landlord training sponsored by the Eviction Task Force in May, where SLIC will be included in introductions. We have also implemented a tenant recognition program to acknowledge tenants who exemplify upstanding citizens of good conscience. We feel attention to positive aspects of the tenant landlord connection will nurture more of the same. The growth and work of SLIC is fueled by a relentless commitment to finding ways to affect significant change in both attitudes and procedures relevant to Schenectady's rental system, such as the rental certificate issue currently under consideration. We hope to forge productive relationships with all those who can share and contribute to our ambitious mission. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a coordinated effort, so we have to keep everybody in order here.
Mr. Mayor, Madam Chair, member of the City Council, good evening. I'm also a member of SLIC's Schenectady Landlord Influencing Change. I'm sure everybody heard about that by now. I would like to present to you a continuation of our noted founder, Chris Morris. Our organization acknowledges the proposal to give landlords the option to choose between two rental certificates inspection plan. We also anticipate the benefit of being able to perform certain repairs without the necessity of hiring a certified plumber or electrician. We appreciate the attention and consideration the city has shown thus far towards our concerns regarding inspections and code enforcement procedures. We do however urge, you know there's a backlash, we do however urge that you also consider the following. We ask that no inspection be required in owner-occupied properties up to four units, as these are considered to be residential rather than commercial. Two, we propose that the required inspection frequency be extended to every three years, attaching the inspection to the unit, not the tenant. We would like the rental certificate to apply to the unit versus the tenant. That would be very achievable. We propose that the required, sorry, we request that upon application for rental certificates, we be given a detailed checklist of just what areas and what items will be inspected. This will better ensure adherence to code expectations prior to the initial inspection. Landlords are, sometimes are unaware as to what the code inspector is looking for, so this will give them a heads-up ahead of time that you need to go and get your building prepared, because these are what the inspectors will be looking for. B, landlords should be given, okay, I got that. C, landlords should be given enough time to finish needed repairs. Consideration should be given to certain circumstances like inappropriate weather for outside jobs, or perhaps an unexpected financial burden that the landlord can't immediately assume, such as painting outside. Calls to code enforcement directly from tenants complaining about their apartment should be referred back to the landlords for resolution, especially for non-life and safety issues. We would like the landlord to be notified what's going on. We have a concern about the city proposed requirement to name the city of Schenectady as a certificate holder on a landlord's insurance policy when they apply for a rental certificate. In regard to this concern, we require more time and resources to determine an appropriate informed response to this issue. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for the comments we follow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Bob Burgess, and I'm also a member of SLIC. To continue with SLIC's proposal, regarding property repairs in Section 138 of the latest proposal, we suggest that the Housing Standards Review Board be in charge of writing the enforcement guidelines for permit requirements. For instance, rules regarding removal of, removal and installation of windows and doors, or the repair or replacement of garage doors. We ask that code enforcement training be implemented with a strong emphasis on consistency in inspection procedures among officers and a more professional, respectful, and diplomatic approach to customer service. We suggest that a performance rating form be given to the landlord at the conclusion of each rental certificate inspection. This form would enable the landlord to detail the quality of his encounter with the city's representative at the meeting. The landlord would be responsible for returning the completed form to the specified city office. And finally, ladies and gentlemen, we request the return of a $25 fee for rental certificates. If rental certificate inspections are truly life-safety issues, the city claims, and not revenue stream, as many might believe, then landlords throughout the city have to be convinced that they need to alter their thinking and soften their resistance to the ordinance. We firmly believe that compliance can double when landlords feel that the city, along with our organization, is making a concerted effort to address their issues and work with them. Not only will the compliance percentage increase, but most importantly, as more and more landlords come onboard, the desperately sought-after improved quality of housing throughout the entire city. In closing, we fully understand that changes are challenged, but ladies and gentlemen, we feel changes are in the air. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Mohammed Hafiz. I'm also a landlord and a member of SLIC. My fellow landlords did such a great job, I just want to stress a couple of points. We focus with our discussion on two points, in order to encourage landlords to voluntarily inspect their properties, and we thought we were getting that from the city. Number one, the reinstatement of the $25 inspection fee, which Bob talked about. Number two, tying inspection to the rental unit rather than the tenant. And we firmly believe that these are the major points of differences. Instead, the city added a new registration and insurance declaration requirement. We, the landlords, we don't appreciate the city publishing a list of the private insurance, a list of the landlords' private insurance records. Also, for the tenants, we don't, they do not appreciate publishing their names, and that the property they live in is rental. We are trying to protect the tenant's privacy right, and we are also trying to protect the tenants from the intrusion of the city inspectors. Code enforcement receives funding from our tax money and from the federal grant, like CDBG funds. They then charge landlords $50 to $100 to inspect each rental unit, and they violate our legal rights in the process. Using our tax money, the city is prosecuting our citizen who dare object to the violation of their rights by code enforcement. Now, if health and safety is the matter of this ordinance, why isn't the city inspecting every house, including single-family homes? Why isn't the city conducting inspection at no charge, like the Section 8 inspection program? And then finally, why isn't the city requiring insurance record of single-family homeowners? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor McCarthy and City Council members, and Vicki Hurwitz, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight about the changes in the rental property regulations. I'm speaking as a citizen concerned about the health and safety of Schenectady's tenants. I am not a member of SLIC. In January of 1997, at 5:00 in the morning, my late husband and I received a call from the fire department in Ulster County telling us that a house we own down there was on fire. By the time we got down to the property, a couple hours later, the house had burned to the ground. Luckily, it was vacant, so there were no injuries, although we had been spending occasional weekends there. Initially, they thought we burned it, but a fire inspection proved that the cause of the blaze was arcing in a junction box in the kitchen. We had recently had electrical work done because of a non-working outlet. My husband had hired an electrician to do the work, he did not do it himself. I'm telling this story because I'm concerned that the new rental regulations allow landlords to do their own electrical wiring. I realize that the regs call for the landlords to get a permit and demonstrate knowledge of electrical wiring, and that there will be an inspection of the work. I feel strongly that Schenectady's tenants should be made aware of the fact that the landlords can do their own wiring, and that a permit will be required. This will ensure that the process is carried out as intended by these regulations. Tenants can be notified of these requirements through the Schenectady Eviction Task Force run by SCAP, which has a tenant training component. After all, Schenectady is a city with old housing stock and old wiring. After experiencing an electrical fire loss from work done by an electrician, I am very concerned about allowing amateurs to do electrical work on properties they do not live in. Homeowners have been allowed to do their own electrical work all along, but since they have to live in the house with their families, presumably much care is taken when this type of work is performed. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I have no one else signed up to speak to this public hearing, so I'm going to declare the public hearing closed, and I'll entertain now a motion for the approval of the minutes from our last meeting. Okay, Ms. Porterfield, seconded by Ms. Perazzo, all in favor? Aye. Okay. Communication and petitions.
Communications presented to the City Council for Monday, March 11, 2013. From the mayor, a list of appointments dated Monday, March 11, 2013. Under general, a letter dated March 1st from the Polish-American veterans of Schenectady extending their gratitude for the receipt of a recent donation of $500. From Bellevue Preservation, Inc., they will hold their monthly meeting Thursday, March 14th at 7:00 p.m. at St. Paul's Episcopal Church. Guest speaker will be Mayor McCarthy. Officer Weekly will also attend if possible. Their guest for the April meeting is scheduled to be Schenectady City Court Judge Matthew Sipnuski, and for May, Schenectady City Police Chief Brian Kilkullin. Under petitions, there are none.
Thank you. Committee reports. Mrs. Brucker.
Thank you, Madam President. Please to announce and to call people's attention to Agenda Items Number 12 and 13, which appeared on the Public Safety Agenda last week for the committee. Both these resolutions are, one is, both are for the city fire department, both are for equipment, turnout gear, and harnesses that will certainly aid the firefighters, not only in fighting fires, but certainly in the safety of those members of the fire department. Number 12 awards and accepts the bid for uniforms and turnout gear, and Number 13 is accepting the bid for the Jemter harnesses, which are the safety harnesses that I believe you and many of us saw that day on display. But this has been a very long time in coming. I'd also like to congratulate the fire department, congratulate them on the receipt of being award recipient of the Rite Foundation, which helped with a lot of the costs of the United uniform and the turnout gear. So again, some very good news for the city, certainly some great news for the fire department and for those workers. So, thank you.
Very good, thank you. Mr. Erickson.
Hey, Madam President. And to tag on to what Ms. Brucker was saying, very exciting news for the fire department. For me, the most exciting part on the uniforms is that we utilized a new purchasing process, put the bids online, we able to save money, five, six, $7,000, I forget the exact number, but a significant improvement. So when we got the information, I did a little research, kind of dug around to see what other people were paying for their uniforms, you know, the pants and the shirts and, you know, different components. And from what I could find, we were paying, you know, quite a bit less than other municipalities across the country. So I got a, did a little minor survey across. So I wanted to commend the staff, the fire department, I think it was Deputy Chief Orr and some folks in the office there that did a great job on this. So, I mean, it's exciting news, but for me, that was the exciting part of it. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other committee reports? Okay, yes. Ms. Porterfield?
Thank you. Health and Recreation met today, we met with the 12309 Neighborhood Association of Schenectady Dog Park Committee, along with Carl Olson and some of the members of his staff regarding the dog park plan that actually brought a couple, up a couple of weeks ago. So at this point, we're moving forward to see what can happen with the plan. They have done a lot of work and are doing the fundraising themselves. They've found an architect to do a rendering of the renovation that they'd like to see happen with the park. So we had a really good meeting today, and Mr. Olson will help by getting some estimates on what it would cost. But let me just say again that they plan to do their own fundraising and not to ask the city to actually finance it, but there may be a request for some in-kind services to get the work done. So at this point, what will happen is we'll, they'll go back, we'll get the estimates, find out what the cost will be, and we will bring it back then to committee and probably have a presentation by that committee on what they would, the plans that they have, and what the, what it would look like in the end, and the overall commitment from the, from the city. So that was our meeting today, and is there anything else that I'm leaving out? So we had a really good meeting, very productive today. Thank you.
Good news, thank you. All right, that's the end of committee reports, so we'll move to privilege of the floor related to the legislative agenda. Lynda Kelleher.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council President, council members, and fellow city residents. My name is Lynda Kelleher, I'm a property owner and live in the city of Schenectady. At the last City Council meeting, committee meeting, Mayor McCarthy presented the council with his nominations for the Energy Advisory Board. Out of the nine nominees, at least two, maybe three, the third nominee's address couldn't be confirmed, don't live in the city. Why? The Energy Advisory Board is part of the code of the city of Schenectady, and yet two, maybe three potential members don't live in the city. One lives in Niskun and one lives in Scotia. When questioned, the mayor stated he wished everyone could live in the city. Well, I wish just those who work for the city and serve on the boards of the city live in the city. Isn't there qualified people who live in the city who would like to serve on the Energy Advisory Board? Why not ask residents to submit their resumes to the mayor and council for consideration? I believe that there are city residents who would be willing and are interested in serving on this board. There is much discussion about residency requirements. Mayor McCarthy says he wants city officials and/or employees to live in the city. Why shouldn't members of the city boards live in the city? Here is the catch, the council has to consider and approve the mayor's appointments to the Energy Advisory Board. This council should insist that members of city boards live in the city. This council has the power to ask the mayor to appoint city residents to this board, and you should. You should apply residency requirements to include city board membership. Do so tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is really not a team effort, honestly. I have to say that, as my wife so generously stated there, and very well stated there, that residency requirements can't be stated enough. We've heard it over and over and over again in a multitude of different meetings and sessions here, and I hope that the city will finally start to consider some of these appointments with very well-qualified candidates right here within the city limits. On Resolution Number Two regarding the ordinance to amend the city code about the Schenectady Medical Hospitality House, homes that are coming about that are similar to Jack's Place and the Falvo effort, they're an integral part of this city. We have a lot of folks that are from out of the area, or have family coming from out of the area, that are coming to visit people here in our hospitals. These homes provide not only a very comfortable and warm supportive atmosphere, but it also provides them with a great place to stay that's much more comfortable than a hotel room, and I hope that the city council will give all forth their effort, as loyal as our community. As far as Resolution Number 10 with the Irish Heritage Month, as a Kelleher, I'm a proud Irish descendant, and it was a pleasure to see this, the Hibernians received such a wonderful award for the heritage. And also, as an honorary member of the NYPD's Emerald Society from when I worked in New York City EMS, it was great to see that resolution pass as well. Finally, as far as Resolutions 12 and 13, I want to commend our fire department on the fantastic job that they did. Again, as I've had 20-plus years in emergency services in the fire departments and various emergency medical service agencies, the lifesaving equipment that they receive through these grants is phenomenal and will truly benefit the people of Schenectady. Thank you.
Thank you. And I have the A.O. And I have the AOH, the Ancient Order of Hibernians. Did someone else wish to speak from that group? No? Okay. Good. All right, then I'll declare this portion of the meeting closed and move to the approval of the legislative agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Okay, Ms. Parrazo, seconded by Mr. Erickson, all in favor? Aye. And then we have three items on which we need to vote.
Item Number Four, An Ordinance Approving the Continuation of the Current Bond Anticipation Note for an Additional Year.
All right. Pardon?
Yes, for a motion.
Okay. Will someone move that? Okay, Ms. Parrazo, is there a second? Mr. Erickson, all in favor? Aye. Okay. We'll call the roll.
Ms. Parrazo?
Aye.
Ms. Porterfield?
Aye.
Mr. Erickson?
Aye.
Mr. Riggi?
Yes, thank you. Now, I have some concerns about the amount of the loan hold into...
Hello? Yeah, okay. For another year because, I mean, it's been already stated in one of our credit reports that we're exceeding the median debt load for New York State right now. I would like to, I, this is basically for a statement, I realize this is going to pass, but I would like to see us be paying more down on the principal every year on these bands because it's, you know, making that minimum payment means when we go to bond, which 22 million, we're going to have to go to bond next year. And I guess my question was, and I appreciate our Finance Commissioner's answer, that she believes that we're going to be in better shape next year, but I have some concerns about that as far as what interest rate we're going to get this year versus next year. So, my concern was, should we go to bond this year for that 22 million, which basically most of it is the garage on Foster Avenue? I mean, it's going to be a long-term bond, and now we're going to jump up on that payment from 540,000 to about 1.4 million when we go to bond. That's if we get a 5% rate next year, which that could be questionable. I hope that happens. But my concerns are, I think with our bands, we have to pay a little more down on the principal than less than 2%. I don't think that's enough, and obviously, when we go to bond, we have to bond more than we would if we're paying more on the principal. So, I would like to see that happen, and with that, I'm going to vote no on this, basically just to say, I want to see things done a little differently. We're going to have to start doing things differently with financing because we're carrying an awful lot of debt load. You know, we have the comptroller telling us this, we have credit companies telling us this, we're carrying a lot of debt load. And in order to do that, you have to pay down on principal, and we also have to change our ways of spending, that's for sure. So, that's my statement, I vote no. Thank you.
Ms. King?
I'm going to vote yes, and just to clarify something that Mr. Riggi said, I too would love to see us pay down more. I'd like to see us pay 10%, but, you know, the harsh reality is, right now, the city is doing the best that they can, and I do anticipate that we will be in a better position next year. And that being said, I'll vote yes.
Ms. King?
Aye. All right. So, that carries with five votes?
Five, one.
Okay.
Item Number Five, An Ordinance Bond Ord, A Bond Ordinance Dated March 11, 2013, Authorizing the Issuance of $6,985,000 Aggregate Principal Amount Serial Bonds of the City of Schenectady, New York, Pursuant to the Local Finance Law to Finance the Acquisition and Installation of Water Meters, Construction and Reconstruction of the Water Distribution System, Acquisition of the Machinery and the Apparatus for Construction and Maintenance of Roots by the Water Department, Reconstruction of the Sewer System, and Acquisition and Installation of a Replacement Equipment for the Wastewater Treatment Plant and Pump Stations.
All right. Will someone move that?
I'll move.
Okay, Mrs. Rucker, second. Mr. Erickson, all in favor? Aye. And we'll clerk call the roll.
Ms. Parrazo?
Aye.
Ms. Porterfield?
Aye.
Mr. Erickson?
Yeah, I just wanted, you know, to make a little short comment on this. This 6.9 million dollars is, as far as I understand, if I understand correctly, it's coming out of the water and the sewer funds, borrowing, not the general fund. You know, all the work that's being done here is to repair and maintain some of the infrastructure in the city that's hundreds of years old, and, you know, it's one of the things that you can't not do if we expect to have water come into our houses when we turn on the faucet. So, there's, some of this work is necessary just to maintain, maintain the infrastructure we have. So, I vote yes.
Mr. Riggi?
Yes, again, my concerns with this are, and I agree with Mr. Erickson, of course, we have to do this, this infrastructure work. My concerns are the inter-fund transfers that we make out of the sewer and water fund yearly, which have been going up. In 2011, we transferred 3 million, and 2012, we're transferring 4.5 million out of the fund, and for '13, we have earmarked 4.5 million. I don't know how the documentation is on this. I mean, I have memos going back to 1999 where auditors for the city questioned those inter-fund transfers and the amount of those transfers. That fund is basically self-sufficient and should be, but when we take money out to go into the general fund, it should only be for support services to do with water and sewer. 4.4, 5 million sounds like an awful lot for those support services. And if that money stayed in the funds, well, we wouldn't be going out to band for almost 7 million dollars, which is adding to our debt load. So, again, and I understand, if we don't do that, we're going to have to raise taxes, but let's be truthful about everything where we are. You know, water and sewer, it's non-exemptible, so if we raise water and sewer rates, and then we're transferring money out of that fund into the general fund, I have a problem with that. And there was never a real legal opinion on this back to 1999, and the question came up, if a resident took the city to court over this, if those transfers were absolutely legal or not. I foiled for it back in 2004, and the answer was, we can't, we can't give you documents that don't exist. So, I have some questions with all of this. We're adding to the debt load again, and naturally, this work has to be done, but I like to see it done within the sewer and water fund. That's what people are taxed for with their water and sewer fees that they're charged, which are non-exemptible. You know, can't get any exemptions on those. So, let's tell it like it is and get down to the reality of where we really are sitting, and that's what I'd like to see. Thank you.
Mr. Riggi, your vote?
Your vote?
I vote no.
Thank you. Ms. Bucker?
I vote yes.
Ms. King?
Aye. So, this also carries with five votes. Okay. All good then. We'll now move to the privilege of the floor regarding city business. I have 13 people signed up to speak. Lynda Kelleher.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council President, council members, and fellow city residents. My name's Lynda Kelleher. I'm a property owner and live in the city of Schenectady. In the Council President King's address to the city, she advocated for increasing the city councils and city staff's outreach to city neighborhoods. At the last City Council Committee Meeting, Council President King continued in her efforts to reach out to the city neighborhoods by suggesting that a team of city council members and staff attend neighborhood association meetings and events. Strong neighborhoods make a strong city. City officials and staff should be more accessible to the city residents. After all, we pay your wages. I would like to suggest that when there is a list of appointments from the mayor, the names of the people being appointed, as well as the town, city, or village of where they live, also be announced by the clerk. City residents have a right to know who is being appointed to the boards of their city. In addition, it should be noted if the members of the various boards receive compensation in the form of pay or any other benefit. Again, as city residents and taxpayers, we have a right to know, and we shouldn't have to research it, and we shouldn't have to foil it to get information. Finally, the council has the power to veto or accept the nomination to boards from the mayor. I strongly urge this council to ensure that board members live in the city. There is no valid reason why someone living in Niskuna or Scotia be appointed to a city board. We have qualified and dedicated community activists living right here in the city who donate their time and their efforts to make their city a better place for all of us to live. Use your power to fill board positions with city residents, residents who have vested interests in making our city strong and vibrant again. Thank you.
Thank you. It looks like, I apologize if my pronunciation is wrong, Jaram Diodat?
Hi. My name is Jaram Diodat. I live at 1081 Howard Street, and I, behalf of myself and many Hyannis, we got the same problem. On 2010, on October, one of my tenants used to sell drugs in the apartment, marijuana, cocaine, and other substance. I evicted him three days after. The police then go and break down the apartment door, damage the apartment inside. I took picture. I come to the police station. I make a report. They said they can't do nothing about it. I come to the city office. I make another report. I asked them, is anybody going to pay for the expense that we're doing there? Nobody was living in the apartment at that time. They said they're going to take step in the matter. A week after, they send me back a letter that deny. I make appointment to see the mayor. On the 3rd, I come several times back. On the 3rd, I never get a call. I never hear back nothing. I go to the DA. I make appointment to see him. I fill out a form. On the 3rd, I can never hear back nothing. On February the 27th, I was at one of the same building. I get an extension, who down, DSS, our taxpayer money. Close them, feed them, and give them a shelter. There was only two persons supposed to be, a girl and his children. Right now, you get a whole ghetto inside there, and they're selling drugs in the apartment, smoking drugs, selling drugs, and there's traffics non-stop. I come to the police station to make a report. You know what they tell me? They cannot take a report. I go to the sheriff. I go to the sheriff, as they send me, I go. The sheriff give me this, to go and fill it out and pay 127 dollars when I evict them. Then why we paying the tax money? In Mount Pleasant here, we pay the highest tax in whole New York, in whole United States, and we need somebody to take step of this matter because every time something damaged, it's the homeowner who bear the penalty of it. And if we house is not proper, the city hall get his shark them running after us. I assure you all know what I talking about. Right? We need people, if we make a report, we must take our matter serious because there's not something necessary.
I need you to summarize, please. Your three minutes are up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Joe Kelleher.
I don't know. My wife signs me up for these things. No, I'm kidding. No, in all seriousness, thank you once again for allowing me to speak. My name is Joe Kelleher, and I am a resident of the city. One of the things that I noticed in the area, and when I first moved here after my wife and I were wed, is I wanted to, I had joined the American Legion where I was before, and I contacted one of the American Legion homes here in the city, and was advised that the American Legion wasn't really a big functioning agency here in the city, and they referred me over to Niskuna. And I found that a little odd, and then I found out why. It's because as active as the American Legion is here in the city of Schenectady, they don't have the home anymore where they used to meet. And many times, they, along with not only other agencies, but some VFWs and other military and veteran organizations, meet at post number 1092 in Schenectady. So, I went over to 1092 in Schenectady, and I saw a lot of the organizations from right here in the city happened to go over to Niskuna. I did join the Niskuna post, and they immediately, if not sooner, as soon as I walked in the door, made me the communications officer. And I can't imagine why, I know. So, thanks, honey. Appreciate that. So, you know, but my point there is, this is a place that's in our area, it's right outside our city limits. It's the only active home in Schenectady County, and it does take care of a lot of the people that are residents and veterans that are residents right here in the city of Schenectady. So, I hope that when we have, when they have events, we have the opportunity to support them too as our neighbors. The U-Matter Schenectady has been going very well, and I've been in touch with Erin Buckenmeyer. She's a fantastic young lady who's done a fantastic job in organizing and planning the U-Matter Schenectady Community Health Assessment. Along with the Schenectady Coalition for a Healthy Community, they've been doing a fantastic job in cities all over the area. I did have the opportunity to help them in designing their website and getting that up and running for them, and it's been a privilege to work with these fantastic people who are going out and finding out more information and gathering up information that's beneficial to all points and all residents of Schenectady. Finally, I do want to encourage all residents and businesses of the city to truly take an active role in their neighborhoods and improving our community. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Sharon Lynn Schmidt?
Good evening, Mayor McCarthy, and President Ms. King, and city council members. I thank you, Marion, for supporting us in our neighborhood meetings, and also you, Vince Riggi, thank you so very much. You're always welcome to attend. I wanted to just point out that Mayor McCarthy will be speaking at Bellevue Preservation, Inc. this Thursday night at 7:00 p.m., and then he is going to be speaking at the Mount Pleasant Neighborhood Association at 8:00 p.m. Before he arrives, we're going to have the community of police, who've been coming and telling us what's going on in our neighborhoods, answering questions. And then at 7:30, Betsy Henry and Susan DeFour from Retree are going to talk about the 40 trees that we're seeking volunteers to help plant by the end of April. At 7:45, Erin Buckenmeyer with Ellis Medicine, the U-Matter Schenectady, will talk about the assessment, neighborhood by neighborhood, and then Mr. McCarthy, Mayor McCarthy, will speak about neighborhood issues. And we thank you so much for spreading yourself so thin. We wanted to also let you know that we have the Merchants Association up and running. We're going to have our third meeting the following Thursday, which is the third Thursday of the month. It'll be March 21st at Global Prophetic Worship and Healing Ministries, 859 Crane Street. We'll have the Gail Harper, the Director of Government Relations and Business Services of the Chamber of Schenectady County, speak to the merchants. We are seeking merchants to come out. We're seeking also merchants to take executive committee positions. We do have an acting president. His name is James Bookout, and we want to thank Mr. Marcella for making the property available because Mr. Bookout bought that Marcella property for his new church, sold his old church on Hamburg Street, his congregation did. And he is taking quite an interest in fixing up the neighborhood, bringing in services. We have some new businesses, Davis's Accessories, Gobby's Barbershop. We have Little Chatterbox, Tiny Tykes, Flip and Twist. We're looking for a dentist, a doctor, an optometrist, a vet, ladies in menswear. We're looking for a lawyer and accountant. We're looking to have a senior center again in the future, someday here. And we just want to let you know that there are services at Global Prophetic Ministries for the youth, a billiards, movies, and games on Friday night, which I didn't know existed. And Reverend Bookout from the Merchants Association is going to be making sure there are... We'll have the Gail Harper, the Director of Government Relations and Business Services of the Chamber of Schenectady County, speak to the merchants. We are seeking merchants to come out. We're seeking also merchants to take executive committee positions. We do have an acting president, his name is James Bookout, and we want to thank Mr. Marcella for making the property available, because Mr. Bookout bought that Marcella property for his new church, sold his old church on Hamburg Street, his congregation did. And he is taking quite an interest in fixing up the neighborhood, bringing in services. We have some new businesses, Davis's Accessories, Gobby's Barber Shop, we have Little Chatterbox, Tiny Tykes, Flip and Twist. We're looking for a dentist, a doctor, an optometrist, a vet, ladies in menswear. We're looking for a lawyer and accountant. We're looking to have a senior center again in the future, someday here. And we just want to let you know that there are services at Global Prophetic Ministries for the youth, a billiards, movies, and games on Friday night, which I didn't know existed. And Reverend Bookout from the Merchants Association is going to be making sure there are youth programs for many of the youth on Crane Street, so that we can get the kids off the street and get them into something more productive to do. And I want to thank you very much for this time. You're gonna be hearing more from the ministers in the future of what they're doing in the neighborhood. And I want to mention also that Reverend Robert at Faith Deliverance Tabernacle serves the children's summer lunches. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much.[623.12][623.12](APPLAUSE). Tony Benome?
First of all, what Mr. Kelleher said about the American Legion, when I was a teenager two or three years ago.[648.04][648.04](LAUGHTER). I played American Legion baseball. There was an awful lot of posts in the area here, and we used to have a heck of a time. They sponsored a lot of baseball for us high school kids, and it was great. So, I just wanted to mention that. Secondly, something that was in the paper this past few weeks about, we're not gonna back this person because he sides with another person, and last fall, before winter set in, there was a comment made on, by one of the council people saying that, somebody was complaining, they said, "Well, we have to answer to people." Well, I got up and I says, "Well, you're supposed to answer to the people that vote for you." And what's happening is, it's party-wise. I mean, we're not gonna put this person in because he's gonna side with another person. I thought you people were voted to help the city out and the residents out. I mean, just because we're not gonna rubber stamp someone, we're not gonna have them come into run for office, I mean, this is ridiculous. I mean, I'm not in love with anybody, don't get me wrong here on the council. I'm sorry, but I'm just saying, this has to stop. It is for the people of the city of Schenectady. It is not for someone to sit down there and rubber stamp what's going on. Thank you.[742.73][742.73](APPLAUSE).
P. DeVores? Yeah. Harry Reid, or Harry Brand, rather, I'm sorry.
Harry Brand, resident of Schenectady. I wish I'd gotten up here before Tony. But let me tell you something, I am so disappointed with our mayor and our city council, with the exception of Mr. Riggi, that it's unbelievable. How you people can sit here and rubber stamp things and never question it, like this gentleman has, I don't believe it. Meeting after meeting, year in, year out, the same party business. It's gotta stop. We gotta get rid of some of you people. Our mayor, what does he do in our difficult times financially here in the city? Promotions, salary increases, gifts, that's taxpayer money. No wonder we can't pay our bills and pay off on the principal, when you're giving everything away. How much do we make on recycling? Where's that money? Where's that million dollars from the sewage plant profit that we made? By gosh, something's gotta come up above the water here, and that we can talk on a level. Treat each and everyone equal, and be able to stand up and have some backbone. And you took an oath here for the city and for the citizens, not for the party, not for yourself.[848.54][848.54](APPLAUSE). Put a stop to this nonsense, or get out of office. We don't need people representing us like that. From the top to the bottom, we need a clean house. We lost some good people recently that could have been involved in this city, and it shouldn't have happened. Party, money, is it your ego? What is it? You're not there for the people, and this has gotta stop. I hope we haven't lost you, Mr. Erickson. You're finally coming to life and doing things for the citizens.[881.12][881.12](APPLAUSE). And I appreciate it, if no one else. But this is what we need here. We need people that are gonna stand up and fight for the citizens in this city. All this money, taxes going up, how can you sell a hundred houses and reduce taxes? You didn't reduce mine. I've had my house for almost fifty years. I never had my taxes reduced. How can you give it to others? I lived in this city all my life. I was born and raised here, and you never reduced my taxes. Who you fighting for? Yourself? You all think you're gonna get a job like Mr. Stratton? Huh? Yeah. Well, I'll tell you, I hope you don't. Whether it's party or no party, twelve, fourteen, sixteen years in office in the city, and what have we got? We got more debt now than we ever had. We don't have anybody except one person fighting for the citizens. That's pretty lousy, pretty low. And as time is either change, or you drop out of office. Because we need some people here that are gonna support our citizens and do the right thing. Have some questions when these things come up and vote. You don't have a question? You don't have any reason to? Something's very, very wrong. Thank you.
Thank you.[964.73][964.73](APPLAUSE). Mary McLean?
Thank you, Mr. Brandt. We need more people like you up here.[983.62][983.62](APPLAUSE). It's already 2:55. I haven't even started to speak.[990.12][990.12](LAUGHTER). I want to get back to the issue of open stage media. I am not familiar with all the programs that OSM produces for the city. I do attend committee meetings in order to gather information. During the committee meeting of Monday, February 18th, a presenter told council that the finance department requested a purchase order so that the city could pay OSM for taping two programs. One program was for taping city council meetings at a cost of $300 per session. The other program was for taping of committee meetings at $200 for each session. On February 25th, during miscellaneous business of the city council meeting, the mayor enumerated all the other programs that OSM produces for the city. Why isn't payment of OSM's work all-inclusive? Why were these two programs targeted for separate payments? Why was a contract involved when the request was for a purchase order? And if there was to be a contract, should it not have applied to all the work that OSM does for the city? The word "contract" was never mentioned during the committee meeting, but it showed up as an item number eight on council's agenda for Monday, February 25th, and council voted for it. Frankly, I don't think council members really know what they're doing. On the same night, the mayor also stated that OSM does impressive work. Either he is comfortable with mediocrity, or he doesn't watch the replays of those two meetings. The shows are not good. First of all, the sound is very poor for both programs. Why bother to tape them if the speakers are not audible? Another thing, there was an incident in this chamber at the last council meetings. The incident was never shown on camera. It never would have gotten past Mr. Harden, Mr. Harden's professional eye. He taped everything that moved in this room, everyone who was present and made the speakers look good. I repeat, if the city is going to spend money on programming, insist on a good product. That's the least we can do. Thank you.
Thank you.[1180.26][1180.26](APPLAUSE). Joy Hall?
I'm Joy Hall of Schenectady. I say I got one solution for this council to do. Number one, we gotta do something about not terrace heights. People parking up there on both sides of the street, why can't the people park down not terrace, cross the street, in the lot? I think we cut down a lot of accidents and stuff like that, because when I went around there the last time, I was accident over there. So, we gotta do something before something else happens, and put up arrow signs, do not turn unless the arrow is on, because it's almost accident today. It's gotta stop. We gotta fill up the potholes. There's a lot of them everywhere, even on Crane Street, on the bridge. So, there's a lot to be done. Fix these curbs and sidewalks, Albany Street too, everywhere. And do something about Broadway, and where the seniors gotta cross the street, it is tough. People are speeding like crazy. It's ridiculous. Don't need to have that happening all the time. We gotta do something, and do it fast.
Thank you.[1279.65][1279.65](APPLAUSE). Jason Plank?
Madam President, City Council, Mayor. March is Disability Awareness Month, and there are over 57 million individuals with disabilities that are living in the United States. Also, 2013 is the 40th anniversary of President Nixon signing the 1973 Vacation Volutation Act, which means in all federal funding, you must have an affirmative action of, for persons with disabilities. And this is also the 35th anniversary of Secretary Calafano signing the HEW regs of implementing the 1973 Vacation Volutation Act. And what that act, when Calafano did sign it, basically it enacted some of the things within the disabled community, and it helped create disability advocates. There has now been well over a million of us have been trained as disability advocates. This came from what's called the Independent Living Movement, which is out of Berkeley, California. And, you know, I just think that with the regulations of coming through, that we need to be able to take a look at this 35th anniversary, and actually take a look at where we've actually have been and where we actually are going. We still have problems here within the city of hiring person with disabilities. The state had did a study, and had said that we have a 70% unemployment rate for person with disabilities, and that Schenectady County is the worst county in the state in hiring persons with disabilities. This city has just taken initiative to lower the salary rate for the Fair Housing Coordinator, and so we don't even know who the Fair Housing Coordinator's gonna be. It's another problem we've got, is affordable and accessible housing. The average one-bedroom apartment is a little over $700 per month in this, in the city. And we need to be able to take a look at some of the different things that are happening. We just lost our Human Rights Director from retiring. We need to know exactly who that person's gonna be. And we need to held our affirmative action person, Merrick Juski, accountable. You know, where are we at on that? That's only 20 hours that we're paying for her. Is that 20 hours, is that enough? Obviously not, because we've got a lot of problems. And we need to take a look at it, because the end of this month, we're supposed to have who is gonna be contracted for the Community Development Block grants. And we need to take a look at and dust off the five-year plan that was done back in 2010. And we need to take a look and see which direction we're going. And thank you very much.
Thank you.[1465.63][1465.63](APPLAUSE). Fred Lee? Marva Isaacs?
Mr. Mayor, Madam President, City Council. Just a reminder that March 23rd, Hamilton Hill Neighborhood Association would be having their awards dinner at Proctors. $15 to get in, $15 at the door. So, I hope to see everybody.
Thank you.[1509.21][1509.21](APPLAUSE). Donnie Birch?
Hello. But honestly, like, oh man, let me just collect my thought real quick. There we go, 2:54. Like, I really respect my elders. I really don't know what's going on here, like, but, you know, the only elders that I've ever seen in this whole circle, and the only thing that brought me here was, you know, grief. And it brought me here to the point where I thought that this is the last, you know, straw. Like, I thought that something would be resolved if I came here, and nothing has. The only thing that I've ever seen that I respected was, like, when I first came here, you know, you were commendable, definitely, but, you know, I mean, I gotta say, Mr. Brandt and, like, oh, what's her name there? Jesus, I'm sorry. She's around here anyway, but, I forget, but, you know, she's sharp. You know, I had a couple drinks, but I have to come here. I mean, who would come here sober? Honestly, I'll tell you right now, bottom line, we need to get a civilian intelligence agency. There's something that's called the CAAPER, that basically holds like an invoice of all the money spent and all that. We really need to be able to, like, download, like, something to where we have everything at our fingertips. These guys, you cannot trust them. Like, you know what I mean? Like, if this guy's preying on you, this supposed to be our mayor, and he's preying on landlords to create revenue? Like, that's pathetic. This guy can't come up with a better reason?
Mr. Birch, please address me.
No, but hold on, hold on. I'm addressing the people, because the people are suffering.
Oh, I need you to address me.
Would you hush my mic? Check this out. But this guy, he can't come up with a better, like, idea to produce revenue than to basically pick on a bunch of people that are successful? Like, I mean, you know, it's crazy. Here's what I'm saying, there is so much things going on right now, and you need to realize this. This man, he knows a bunch of legal tacticians that have, like, if you look at legal, like, you know, law, it's open to interpretation. They could use it for a dual purpose. And they're trying to get rid of the Civilian Police Review Board, Brian Wright's gone, everybody's gone. And you know who's still here? These dirtbags. So vote for me, Donnie Birch, and you might think it's a joke, but I'm telling you right now, I'll swing the vote probably 80%, because a lot of people don't even know that Donnie Birch is running. You know, everybody that knows my grandpa thinks it's gonna be him. I'm gonna fucking win. All right? Period. Bye.[1667.66][1667.66](APPLAUSE).
All right, that's the last person I have signed up, so I'm gonna declare this portion of the meeting closed. Did, did?
I'm sorry.
All right. Quickly.
I'm gonna quickly apologize. Good evening, everybody. My name's Robin English. I live at 305 Front Street, but I just wanna know if we can make a big sign on North College to let the tractor-trailers know that they can't go down there, because I had an incident, I'm sorry, ladies and gentlemen, for taking up your time. There was a big tractor-trailer stuck there, and I had to call the police, and cars were trying to get around. I just wanna know if they can make a big sign that would say, "No tractor-trailers allowed" on a small, it's on North College. I just wanna know, because children play out there, and I had to call the police again to see, to help the gentleman get through and everything. I just wanna make sure that you can make a big sign that says, "No tractor-trailers are allowed," and it's too narrow for them. I do appreciate this. Thank you very much for letting me speak, and have a blessed day.
Sure thing. Thank you.[1733.53][1733.53](APPLAUSE). All right, so I will now close the privileges of the floor regarding city business, and turn to miscellaneous business of the council. Ms. Porterfield?
I'd just like to first of all acknowledge that March is Women's History Month. Women's History Month honors and celebrates the struggles and achievements of American women throughout the history of the United States. And American women have struggled throughout our history to gain rights, not simply for themselves, but for many other underrepresented and disenfranchised groups in America. It had its origins in 1981, when Congress passed the Public Law 9728, which authorized the president to proclaim the week, March 7th, 1982, as Women's History Week. Now it is Women's History Month, and that started in March 1987. So, I just wanna remind folks, it is Women's History Month, so there's various displays and programs surrounding that. So, you know, I know there's some local... So, you know, I know there's some local things going on as well. And on the 25th, we will have at least one woman who we will be giving a resolution to, to, for the history, that she actually is a keeper of history within the city of Schenectady, so it's kind of exciting. Since 1995, Presidents Clinton, Bush, and Obama have issued an annual proclamation designated the month of March as Women's History Month, so I just want to remind folks of that. Additionally, A Magic Kingdom just had their 35th anniversary, and Ms. Parrazo and I both attended that, and so they've sent us a letter of thank you. It says, Schenectady City Council, we sincerely appreciate all your support that you, the city, have given A Magic Kingdom for their 35th birthday celebration. The ribbon cutting will be remembered by both Sue Ellen and I, and I, and I, her name is Kathy, and all the families and staff at A Magic Kingdom. We continue to support our city. Thank you for everything, Kathy and Sue Ellen. And this organization has been there, as I said, for 35 years, and they do a very important thing, taking care of our most vulnerable citizens. It was a very nice time, and they just wanted to say thank you for our support.
Okay. Thank you. I believe Mr. Riggi's picture was in there, too. Right? Okay. All right?
Yes, he was.
Okay. Anyone else? Mr. Erickson?
Thank you. I just wanted to, you know, thank the landlords group from coming down tonight and communicating with us. I've gone to a couple of their meetings, and this group of individuals who are operating, you know, businesses essentially in the city of Schenectady appear to be an extremely organized group in the sense that you go to their meetings, there's a huge turnout, and there's a lot of people that are truly interested, and their concerns, instead of just being complaints, they're coming in with suggestions, they're coming in with, from the perspective of, they understand what the city is trying to do, they understand what they need to do to continue the business, and it's a collaborative effort. And I know that the staff, the mayor's had legal staff working with them as well, and just a lot of communication going back and forth. I think it's great. The impact of rental properties in the city of Schenectady is very important. It might be one of the most, or at least one of the top, in terms of importance to Schenectady's economy. Every city needs a healthy, quality housing stock for rental, available for rent, and I don't think we could survive without rental properties in any city. But the quality of that stock needs to improve, and this group, I think, is very dedicated to working with the city to improve the overall stock of housing in the city. So, I just wanted to thank them for coming down and being very collaborative with myself and other members of the council and the city staff as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Parrazo.
As many of you know, I try to use my energy and my focus to keep positive on things, but tonight really has me pretty rattled, and for one of the first times, I feel like I need to speak up. Our jobs are not just what you see in committee meetings, in at council meetings. Our jobs happen via email. Our jobs happen via phone calls. Our job happens via meetings, both internal and external. So, you know, three times this week, I met with the mayor about different issues. Twice this week, I was out till seven, eight, nine o'clock, or last week. This week, it's four nights, listening to people, talking to people, gathering information, asking questions. I take exception with saying that one of us is up here trying to work hard for the people. We all try to work hard for the people, and we all work hard for the people, and I accept any phone call, any email, and any dialogue, and we do ask questions, and we do discuss things. That being said, I recognize that we have tax issues, but I also recognize that we have an aging infrastructure. We have an issue with not gaining our fair share of state aid. As the superintendent shows, the skewed amount of school aid we get is an issue. We have an infrastructure that is aging. We have an antiquated car fleet. We have a tremendous workload of things and balance to try to make this city move forward effectively and as best as we all know how. That being said, we also work for pennies on the dollar for countless hours, because we love our city, we love our citizens, and we want to move in a forward direction. I will say proudly that I am proud to be a Democrat. I'm proud to work with the team of people that I work with. I'm proud to look at State Street and J Street and Erie Boulevard. I'm proud to be a city that's advancing instead of a city that's decaying, as many cities across this nation are. So, that, I just felt like I needed to say my piece tonight. I will now turn my efforts back to using positive energy toward positive solutions and not just complaining about the problems that we have, which I recognize, but try to move in a forward direction. So, a nice segue into the fact that one of our new assemblymen listened to our legislation. We passed supportive legislation about not getting enough state aid last week, and he has come forth and with stewardship toward incentive for municipalities' aim. It is proposing that the city of Schenectady get an extra $1.2 million in state aid. Let's hope that our Senate representative championships this effort as much as our new assemblyman, Santa Barbara, has, because lord knows, we could use a little more equity in our state aid, considering that Utica, a city of our similar size, gets far more than we do. In addition, I would like to call awareness to Paul Mitchell, the school. They're doing a wonderful thing for the community. On March 30th at 8:00 PM, they're having a speaker, Kathley Buckley, Kathy Buckley. It's free to the public. It's going to be at Proctor's, come one, come all. She was born with the inability to communicate, and she was considered to be slow in elementary school. Well, come to find out, she had a hearing impairment, and she has really overcome a lot in her life and uses her life experiences through humor to be this fabulous, inspiring, and empowering motivational speaker. So, I will announce that again. In addition, I want to call attention to Schenectady Veterans Club at 718 Union Street. They're having their St. Patrick's Day celebration again, Sunday, March 17th. It's from noon to 3:30 PM. I went last year. I know the mayor was right behind me. Unfortunately, he had a busy day because we had a bad fire that day, but it was more than enough to eat and some great camaraderie, so everybody stopped by. It's $6 for a really nice corned beef or ham sandwich, including homemade salads and all sorts of good things. Then, the last thing I was gonna report was the Mount Pleasant Neighborhood Association, but I think Sharon did a great job. No, I, listen, I'd rather have you give your passion and announce it from yourself.
I see you coming to our meetings also.
You are more than welcome. And lastly, I just want to call attention to SLIC and to the Mount Pleasant Neighborhood Association and all of our neighborhood associations, because I think sometimes our citizens think they can't make a difference. And SLIC has grown from the first, I went to their very first meeting, which was really not even an official meeting, at Niskiyou Library, and there was maybe a dozen people in the room. The last meeting that I went to last week, there was probably 100 people in the room. They consistently give us good, positive message for what they need, and I think the city is trying to meet them partway, at least the best we can, and I applaud their approach and their progressive way of getting things done, and the same thing with Mount Pleasant. They really have worked very, very hard and continue to move forward, so thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Riggi?
Thank you, Madam President. I think Ms. Kelleher, you brought up about accessibility. Well, I'm sure we're all accessible, and I'll say that, but again, I think when you have questions about things that come up in committee and you have some concerns about it, please feel free to call. You can call me at home anytime. My home number's 377-8326. I answer all my calls. I don't screen calls, and I'm home a lot. I'm retired, so I have a lot of time on my hands, and I'll be happy to listen to your concerns and to call a roll, because when you come to the privilege of the floor, unfortunately, on consent agenda items, it's kind of a little bit late at that point. So, I would like to see, hear your concerns, and I'll be happy to call for a roll call so we can listen to you, what you have to say, and we can think about these things and give us some more to think about. So anyhow, feel free to call. Getting to SLIC, it does prove, when you get a group together of people, I agree with my colleagues on this, that changes can be made. And I have to say, and I talked to Carl Falatiko earlier today, and between him and Eric Schilling, they did a great job of listening to these concerns. I realize not everyone's gonna be happy with everything, but this is really a great move forward as far as customer service goes on that end. You have the city listening to concerns, making changes, and still listening. You know, the door's not closed on this yet, so it shows you, and I applaud your group for, you know, having the fortitude and having a good organization that you put together. When there's a problem, it's being addressed. And again, I can't applaud Carl Falatiko and Eric Schilling enough for listening to these concerns and working with these people that own property. They have a big-time vested interest in the city of Schenectady. I mean, no question about that. They're investing their money, their dollars into the city of Schenectady, and I realize there are some bad landlords out there. We know that. But the people that are in that room at the community center, they're not the bad landlords that are there, and they're addressing these issues. They're gonna do education, which is needed, so I think that's a big, big, big plus for the city, and I can't say enough about that. I think that's really, really something to be commended. Quickly, I talked to Mr. Thorne about there's, I've had some issues, people complaining, and maybe some of you have too, about minutes being posted on our website. There seems to be a problem. I will speak to John Calucciello about it. There seems to be a problem with the minutes getting posted on our website. So, we will look into that, and Mr. Thorne has been very helpful with it and giving his insight on what's going on, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam President. I do want to thank everyone from SLIC who joined us tonight, and again, the ongoing dialogue that is occurring. As council members have pointed out, it is a dynamic process, there's give and take, and it's, I believe, will end in a product that we'll all be proud of. And as Mr. Riggi pointed out, we may not, everybody won't be completely happy with it, but it will be better than what was there, and it'll lay the foundation for future growth and modification. It's the, one thing I tell the staff, whenever they're out dealing with the public, I want them to use common sense in whatever the end result is. You have to have a product that, again, people can understand, there has to be a reason behind our actions, and it has to make sense in terms of the application on a particular situation. So, I, again, thank members for coming down tonight, thank you for your past consideration, and again, as we go forward to try and make Schenectady better. On the roll call vote on our financing, Mr. Riggi, good friend, but on some of it, you know, it's the balancing act to pay the bills and provide the level of service that the community wants. Look at, people reference the Bureau of Service. It was an expensive building, it's $20 million, but $5 million of that was for environmental remediation. I don't know, if you know...
Yeah, that's true. I don't think I'm up to it. I think that's a common truth.
And if you look at some of the, again, the financing, if you have some contacts with people who used to be associated with Union College, who took substantial portions of real estate off the tax rolls, you know, so that the college could do improvements, and they talk about the improvements there, and they were good improvements, made the neighborhood better. But if we went to any property owner and said, you don't have to pay taxes, period, people would be a lot more able to invest in their property. And so that where some people have created the problem by pinching us in terms of some of our revenue, we still have to maintain that level of services and deal with the problems that are out there. In terms of the appointments for the Energy Advisory Board, that evolved from where it was an informal group, and again, it has some regional significance. We're participating in the Climate Smart Communities. Actually, there's a grant, an application that's being spearheaded by the city of Albany, working with communities in the region. Those individuals that were recommended by me and confirmed by the council tonight was a group that evolved from the prior Energy Advisory Board over a number of years, and I think that their level of expertise serves us well and serves the region well. That does not preclude other people from participating in it. It has been a very open process. More recently, they haven't had regular meetings. It was the intent of the council to, again, formalize it, which we've done tonight, and there will be formal meetings so that people can come forward, can put their ideas in, and so that we can work on these products, projects that benefit all of us. Remind people that changed the clocks this weekend, that if people did not change the batteries in their smoke detectors or carbon monoxide sensors, would encourage you to do it. It's a cheap investment. It really saves lives in the event that you do have an unfortunate set of circumstances where you have a fire or malfunctioning furnace or something where you have carbon monoxide buildup. And I would make an announcement, not this week, but a week from now, Ruby Tuesdays is sponsoring a, what they call, community give-back program, and they are, if you go there on Thursday through Saturday, March 21st through the 23rd, they'll donate 20% of your check back to the Woodlawn Park Fund. Again, Woodlawn Neighborhood Association has a small group that is working on improving the Woodlawn Park. They're laying the groundwork for significant improvements there. I thank them for their service and their time, and again, we appreciate Ruby Tuesdays helping us out. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. I'd also like to thank SLIC for coming, and I would also ask if you could possibly get us your comments in writing. That would be very helpful to us. Okay, good. Mr. Thorne reminded me that a list of appointments are on the table next to the podium, and that all communications to the council are available in the clerk's office, there's no need to do a foil for that. Also wanted to mention the, but Ms. Kelleher noted, we are gonna try to put teams of us together, including the mayor, to get out to neighborhood meetings, so we would just ask if the neighbor, if the person in charge of the neighborhood group would get in touch, probably with Mr. Thorne, and give a couple of possible dates, because of course, some of the groups meet on the same night, so, and we was, said, we'll put a team together and then come out. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Kim, Mr. Riggi, seconded by Ms. Parrazo. All in favor? Aye.